Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 30th Special Board of Education Meeting. If we could stand first for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any announcements? No one has any announcements?
I would like to announce that we do not have a need for item six this evening, closed session, so that we can end at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Caitlin has arrived.
Hi, Caitlin. Okay, our consent calendar is item number three. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any board member would like to pull? Do we have any request for comment on the consent calendar?
We do not.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the approval of the consent calendar?
I move the approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Of a motion by Dr. Kaiser, second by Mr. Tennis. We'll do a voice vote, starting with Ms. Dolby.
Ms. Dolby, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Tennis, aye.
Robinson, aye. Landau is absent. It's approved, four to one. Okay, item number four. This is a discussion action item from Educational Services. It's the approval of the Local Control Accountability Plan that we reviewed in public hearing on the 21st.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm, the Ed Services team, who's taking the lead?
I'll start us off, President.
Thank you, Mr. Marshon.
You bet. So first, before we get into the discussion action portion of this, we would like to go ahead and go over the yearly timeline that comes along with the, of the approval of the LCAP. So at this time, I'm going to pass it over to my two directors, Tim Karas and Tina King.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. So we would just like to give you a rundown of the LCAP process in its entirety. And so I'm going to walk you through the graphic you see on the screen. You also have a handout in front of you, so you can follow along. The, it's kind of hard to read from far away. And the LCAP is really a process that never ends. Before we get an approval on one LCAP, we're already thinking ahead to the next one, specifically based on end of year data. So I just wanted to lay it out as simple as I, as I could, to talk you through the process. So in June, late June, as we are asking for approval tonight, that is when the LCAP gets approved. Also in June, and actually, before the approval happens, we're already looking at state test data in a normal year. Sites are at the site level. We are looking at a district level to evaluate needs moving forward into the, into the next school year. And we're also looking at things like attendance and suspension rate. Okay, so really, June is when that starts for the, for the upcoming year. In September, the Butte County Office of Education will notify us of their acceptance and approval of the LCAP. So after approval, within five days, by law, we are required to submit the approved LCAP to the Butte County Office of Education for approval. Typically, what happens is they work with us throughout the summer and early into the fall to make any necessary changes per ed code. And they'll give us our final approval in September. In December, the state dashboard is released, which gives us another dose of data to analyze and use for planning. And then in January, after Christmas, the LCAP document is then populated by our contractor that houses the LCAP. It is populated from the previous year's LCAP into the new year's LCAP. So we're never starting from scratch. The last time we did that was the first LCAP ever, which was 2013. In February is the first community input meeting with the larger group. And that is looking at data and analyzing our progress towards our goals. In March, the state and CUSD identified targeted student group parent input meetings happen. And currently, right now, in Chico Unified, and we hope this changes, but our targeted student groups are BIPOC students, students with disabilities, homeless and foster, and our English learners. In April, following those smaller group meetings, the focus parent group meetings, we then bring the, go back to the community meeting for more input. So that's our second community meeting of the spring. Following that meeting, based on the input from a variety of groups, including students, staff, and community, the CUSD staff will revise the LCAP based on that input. Then we bring it forward to the board as a draft plan in June, as we did last week, and then open up a public comment time, where the public can comment via email, or whichever way they wish, really, and, and we will answer questions and take that into account. And then, then we start the cycle over again with the approval, and then we just keep going around and around each year. Any questions?
Not a question, just a reminder that we're mandated to hold those last two LCAP, the first, the hearing, and then the approval, within one week of each other. So we, you know, we can't, we can't take longer.
I do have one thing to add real quick to Tim's presentation on the, the cycle here is that we also work with Butte County Office of Education throughout the entire year. They have trainings, updates, anything that comes out new with the template from the State Department of Education. They update us on that. And those happen frequently. You know, adjustments to the template do come out, and they want us to know early. So throughout the year, we are attending workshops from BCOE, and they're a close partner in looking at, at what we've done and editing and bouncing ideas off as well.
Remember Dolby, you had a question?
Similarly, it's just a clarification, or make sure that I'm staying on track with different categories. The targeted groups listed here, those are the groups that are selected according to the dash, the California State Dashboard. Is that correct?
Right. Those are the student groups that we see a significant performance gap.
Okay. So according to our scores from, based on data?
Right.
Those are the students that are targeted because of their, the scores within the subgroup categories. And those categories are chosen as a state and, and by the state guidelines.
Correct. And we also add in our English learners. They are currently not a targeted subgroup for us, student group, but we, we need that input from that parent community.
Sure. Thank you.
And one thing I just wanted to add to this is the fact that it is never a new LCAP. It is a cycle. It moves from year to year. When we first started it, the community helped us create it, but the priorities are set by the state. us create it, but the priorities are set by the state. Those carry over from year to year, and we adjust our work based on our outcomes from year to year.
Mr. Tennis, you had a question?
Yes. Can you clarify the, the goals of the LCAP relative to the target categories versus the goals of the LCAP relative to the entire district?
All, all the goals are written, and I think when we say goals, really, the measurable outcomes that we're talking about in LCAP are the metrics. So we use that term because the overall goals are very broad. The metrics, we always write to, for, to close achievement gaps between groups that are significantly behind the all-students student group. Okay? So what that means technically on the state dashboard, that is if they're two or more colors away from the all-students student group. So that's how those targeted student groups are chosen.
So there's no interest in the well-being of the district across the board through the LCAP? It's all about, about bringing the, the various categories closer together?
That, that is the focus of the LCAP, but that is not what the LCAP is all about. Services that we may bring in with the intention even of serving a certain population are available to all students. So when we talk about, go ahead, Kelly.
Well, I was just going to say, the goal of the LCAP is that all students achieve at or above standard, all students. And when we have students that are not, or groups of students that are not, then providing the support to ensure that they are. When we have individual students, regardless of if they fit into a category or not, providing them those supports. That's the goal of the LCAP, is the success of all students.
So it's legitimate for any Chico Unified family to take an interest in what's going on with the LCAP?
Yes.
Process? I've said this before, we didn't get notification on these meetings that were discussed in my family, and I did some research with other families that I know. And I think the district could have done a lot better getting the word out about these meetings. I'm here to tell you that in February, we have no communication from the district at all that there was going to be an LCAP meeting taking place. And in March, we also did not receive, in my home, any, any information about this. With respect to the April meeting, I found out about it as a board member, that it was happening. And that's when I began to wonder whether, you know, who was being invited, who should come, and so forth. And so, so I actually sent notice out to some people through social media that there was a meeting in April. But the Zoom call or whatever, there was no way for somebody to participate without going to their school site. Okay? I have one contact who tried to go to their school site, and it was locked. So not an open meeting, not, not available. I just kind of did some research across different school sites, and I found varying levels of notice given to families. So isn't it one of the goals of the LCAP, and I know the answer, I'm asking a question that I already know the answer to, that we be, you know, making this information about these meetings available to our clients?
Absolutely. So typically, this information has come to families through their school site, and there are multiple opportunities for input when the school sites are developing their own school site plan, through PTA meetings, it's shared, through school site council meetings. And then when we have these community-wide LCAP meetings, we have invited both targeted groups, members of PTA, members of school site councils to come to those. And I am not going to say that we did, we had great communication this past year. Without a doubt, I think COVID and our typical communication methods probably threw us for a loop, and we can always be better. I will tell you, though, that we did send out notification when all of the school site plans, which are tied to the LCAP, went out. Those went out to every parent from the school sites. We also sent out notification of the final draft. So were we late in getting this all out to everyone? Absolutely. Have we met all of the legal timelines that we need to meet in terms of posting it, allowing opportunity for community input? We have done that. My right-hand person here, Erica, has already said, all right, we won't, we, we've heard you loud and clear, and we have a plan to make sure along every step of the way, every parent is notified through our area's communication system for next year. So, you know, I appreciate the input, and I cannot argue that communication could be better.
Thank you for that explanation.
I have a question because I think it's important that what you did in trying to reach out was important, you know, to, and I know it was to you and, and it is to us. After this information was out, because I think everybody had it by a week before the 21st, did you?
Of which, of last, the last meeting?
June, of June, yeah.
Okay, so last week, okay.
And you've been in touch and, and communicating. Was there any one thing that raised your interest in following up, that people were interested in the, letting you know that they weren't happy with what was in the LCAP? What was the feedback?
Well, we can hear the staff presentation. I mean, I've prepared some comments.
Can I have just a point of order really quick, because I, I think that we're bordering on discussion, and I just want to make sure that we're not actively in discussion at, just at this point, and maybe save the conversation for after the presentation?
For discussion, yes. And Mr. Tennis just indicated that was his preference, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin.
There's no more questions on the yearly cycle. At this time, really, we do not have a presentation, because we, we had our presentation last week on, on the LCAP. So basically, at this time, we are passing it off to the board for their discussion on the LCAP and discussion and action item.
And of course, we're happy to answer any questions if questions have come up between last week and this week.
Yeah, now we're, we're into the board technical questions for clarification purposes.
Can I just ask another point of clarification on order?
Of course.
So are we, are we still asking questions of staff?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not, we're still not in board discussion, because that will be after a motion, isn't it, right?
That's after motion, that's also after public comment, which we do have.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have questions of staff? Apparently not. Okay, now we are on to public comment. Yes, Dr. Kaiser?
I noted that somebody had suggested that using a database to assess our impact on the social-emotional. And so I think that's a data set we haven't necessarily been able to gather in the past, but have, do we have ways that we think we're going to be able to track the impact of the additional resources that we're providing?
Yes. The counselor team has been working on that.
Good.
Or actually, has worked on that. And they have universal screeners for, ready for elementary, junior high, and high school. That will be given at the elementary level four times a year, and at the junior high and high schools, three times a year. In addition, students will receive shorter surveys. We're still working out the, the timeframe on that, but two and three, two, between, every two or three weeks is kind of what's been talked about. So we will have that data. As of right now, we really have one time-a-year survey data.
Right.
For the secondary students, and then a universal screener for the elementary students.
So that's really positive, because I think it's key that we have, since we're using emergency money in effect, that we have a quicker and more wide-base, you know, data set that we can look at and check. So that's great, thank you.
Yeah, and that, that database that you're talking about, that system, is called EduClimber, and that will be used to, I, to focus our, our attention with our social-emotional services on the kids that need it most.
And in addition, if we're meeting the social-emotional, behavioral, and academic support needs of students, we should expect to see a reduction in absenteeism, an increase in academic achievement, a decrease in suspension and expulsion, all of those indicators as well.
I guess the other aspect of this is now that the state is tracking the certification process for CTE, that we are having students meet that certification, I think that's another aspect of that, what we'd like to track. Somebody asked me what a concentrator course was, and I was kind of shocked. So, you know, there are parents and kids out there who aren't aware that if they do a three-course sequence. So that, again, seems another piece. It's a new piece of data for the state, but certainly, given the vitality of our CTE programs, I think that's something we really want to track.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree, and the CTE is part of the college and career readiness indicator, which in my mind is kind of the gold standard for the results of students going through Chico Unified and graduating. How ready are they for their college and career?
Okay, any other questions of staff? We're now at the public comment. Plus, we do have one request. Mr. Shepherd, if you could contact that person, please?
Thank you. I'll be calling Jessica. Voicemail?
There's no answer. Thank you. Okay, now we're to the board to discuss the agenda item. Any further discussion? Mr. Tennis?
I have some comments. These will be my last comments on, on the item. So is that appropriate in accordance with the protocols or whatever?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
No, we need a motion.
No, you're, you're right. Just.
I will move, you're, you're correct. I will move the Educational Services approval of the 2122 Local Control Accountability Plan.
I'll second.
Yes, Mr. Tennis, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thought a lot about this. I remain opposed to the LCAP that is before us today for the following reasons, which I've previously stated, but will now expand on. First, I believe the equity shift that is central to this document will contribute to grade inflation at Chico Unified. It will do this by elevating the priority of equity gaps, or achievement gaps. These, again, are the disparities in academic and social-emotional success that have been identified along racial lines, socioeconomic class, English learning, housing status, et cetera, as a primary driver of district policy and educational services, rather than the more straightforward bread-and-butter approach of our previous LCAPs. I would refer you to goal number one on pages 99 and 100 of this document. With this change in focus toward so-called equity, I feel that our teachers, administrators, and the newly-minted Equity Alliance cohorts will forevermore be trying to chase down and erase what are being interpreted as racially-based or class-based outcomes. But since these disparities are almost certainly not the direct result of something the district is doing wrong, I fear staff will feel pressure to take a path of least resistance, which could be to simply inflate grades or water down the academic rigor of our various programs so that everyone can succeed equally, regardless of their actual performance. If you look back at how the, this issue is, is discussed on the state level, at the California Department of Education and the State Board of Education, it is evident to me that that is exactly the approach that they want us to take. And as I pointed out in some of my earlier communications, the state is urging us to get rid of things like GATE and calculus pathways, and this is something that I feel we need to resist. And that's part of what I'm doing with this no-vote. The trend of so-called equity leading to grade inflation and diminishing academic excellence can be clearly seen at the university level, where the CSU system, and as of last month, the University of California, have buckled to political pressure and stopped requiring the SAT and ACT tests with student applications. This will create a future for those colleges that is actually very inequitable, because it will award credentials, that would be acceptance and ultimately college degrees, to students who simply looked good on paper, rather than by accepting and promoting the best, as proven through a rigorous standardized test. This is a total departure from the past. So "success," quote-unquote, in California's academic future may boil down to which school districts simply hand out the most easy A's. Secondly, the LCAP that is before us today, with its heavy emphasis on racial equity, is not, in my opinion, the product of any meaningful input from the community of Chico, as has been claimed and as would be required by California Code Section 52062, but is instead something that has been foisted upon us by academia and political appointees in Sacramento with the goal of promoting a high-minded political ideology. California Code, California Code Section 52062 stipulates that when formulating its LCAP, a district should notify members of the public of the opportunity to submit written comments regarding the specific actions and expenditures proposed to be included in the Local Control and Accountability Plan, or annual update to the Local Control and Accountability Plan, using the most efficient method of notification possible. This document, by contrast, has been carefully wordsmithed and incubated over the past several months in meetings that were not generally publicized under the cover of the COVID lockdown, and only sought input from hand-picked representatives of the target student categories, their families or representatives, that the state and district have identified as needing special attention. Gone was any early opportunity for the bulk of Chico parents to tell the district what their families wanted and needed from our school system, which we are paying good money for. Finally, what public comments we have received on this LCAP seem to be very negative and unapproving. I would never have expected a huge amount of public input from busy parents in the middle of summer on something as arcane as the LCAP process, but it speaks volumes to how much connection Chico families have with this draft we are voting on today, that the comments we have received are negative and seem to be urging us to go back to the drawing board. I would propose we send up to Sacramento an LCAP that looks a lot more like our previous ones, which emphasized the old-school values we were told on May 5th we would be, in a meaningful sense, leaving behind. These were, number one, quality teachers, materials, and facilities. Number two, to fully align our curriculum and assessments with California State content standards. Number three, support high levels of student achievement. Number four, provide opportunities for parent involvement and input. And number five, improve school climate. These common-sense principles of the past have now been replaced with a much more nebulous, very unstem-like, if I may, trio of values. Inclusive academic learning, inclusive social-emotional learning, and provide interventions and supports to teach social and behavioral skills. As someone who values history, literature, science, philosophy, geometry, geography, and art, there's little in the new LCAP document that entices me to vote for a major change in course for the district that once again comes from academia and Sacramento and really has very little to do with what we have done in the past or should be doing now. Thank you very much.
Dr. Kaiser?
This is initially an aside, but somebody named Jessica tried to send an email, and then it disappeared. So I don't know if that was the person we were, I don't have anything now. I just saw it and disappeared, so I don't know. Okay, so it's interesting to me that you didn't include gender, because the initial change in education happened after the Russians beat us into space, and Eisenhower as president panicked. And at that point, he said, I don't care what gender they are. If they can do math and science, that's what we need. That's me. Total math and science. I one time got a B+ in my last calculus class because a. because a junior college professor kept interrupting the teacher, but you know, it does happen. The people who made the decision, I have been chair of GE for the CSU, for the state, for a number of years in the past. There has been frequent complaints about the SAT. They just finally came to a head, because it couldn't be administered in the normal setting and the normal proctoring couldn't happen either. And when they did that, they discovered that it wasn't really an effective measure. So I do not believe that not using these tests are going to change qualifications. The universities are looking at the whole, whole part of the student, and that's really what we want, because nobody goes to college absolutely knowing what they're going to be, because all they had was high school. High school's very narrow. You get to college and the whole world takes on a completely different color and shape. And you should be able to find what it is that you really are interested in. So we have been doing the LCAP since 2013. We have always, up until the COVID situation, gotten plenty of input, and I don't believe that someone's education is going to be downgraded. I think when you have more people with different aptitudes but very interested in learning in a discussion or a class, that will spark greater learning. So the context of this downgrading an individual in a class, because other people that don't look exactly like them are there. So I was the only girl in my advanced math class in high school, because the other girl got married and by state law, they kicked her out. So the teacher would say, "Oh, question one was so easy, nobody missed that." I would miss it. He'd get to question 10, the last one, he'd say, "Oh, this question is so hard. I didn't really think anybody would, I'd get it." Everybody else in the class was a male. You think they were lessened by me being in the class? I think I was the only one in the class who went on thinking I was going to measure in physics and getting smart in college and choosing sociology instead. But I still did statistics. That was my second mandatory language in my grad school, math. So I don't believe this is a watering down. I think it will allow all of our teachers to reach out, all of our students, and the way we do math right now in second grade is already very, very different than the way we used to do it, because we have realized that not everybody processes their information in the same way, and that's an asset.
Ms. Dolby?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Tennis. So just after hearing your points of concern, how do you envision the classroom looks different under this LCAP? Can you, can you paint a picture for me what you think, how the, the classroom looks different under this LCAP as opposed to the previous LCAP?
Respectfully, I think that question just doesn't have a fine enough point on it for me.
I think, I think what I'm, I'm curious about is if you think that we should, we should just spruce up our previous LCAP and send that to Sacramento instead, what is your concern with this, with this, the LCAP as it has been revised, that is, that is going to translate into the classroom, how it makes the classroom look different and the teaching of, of our students look different?
I think that my objection is to the values that are put forward.
So it's, your objection is to the interpretation of the LCAP? Your, your objective interpretation or subjective interpretation of the LCAP?
No.
That's, that's what it sounded like, sorry.
No, my, my objective observations of the LCAP.
So objective would be measurable?
Yes.
And unbiased?
Yes.
So you're saying that your opinion of the LCAP is unbiased?
Yes.
Okay. And so then you should be able to speak measurably how you think it looks different translated into the classroom as opposed to the previous LCAP?
Well, looks is a subjective word. I mean, that sounds like, uh, very subjective.
Outcomes, sorry. Let's say outcomes. How are the outcomes different?
Like the classroom outcome?
Measurable outcomes, yeah. How are that measurable outcomes different for our students? That causes you to object to the LCAP in its, in its current form?
Well, I mean, as I stated, I, I, I am convinced that this either very strongly could or will lead to grade inflation.
And how does that affect our students?
That's bad, very, very bad. Grade inflation.
Can you explain why you think that's bad?
Grade inflation is the thing that every single one of us up here on this stage should be about trying to make sure that it doesn't happen.
Can you explain to me what you think grades are for?
Because if we had grade inflation, that would mean.
Tell me, tell me, tell me your philosophy on grades. I'm really interested to hear this.
I was kind of interested to answer the last question before I move on to a new one, but grade inflation is a huge threat to our entire society at every level. Yeah.
Okay, but let's talk about the philosophy of grading in general. So what's your philosophy on grading and providing a grade to a student?
I think it should be objective, to use a word we've already put a definition on. Yeah, I mean, and, and as far as testing, standardized testing, I, I, I think that's a, and we're living in an imperfect world, clearly, but standardized testing is very important.
And so back to the SAT example, if we're going to talk about standardized testing, do you realize that this, that there are actual scientific studies that show that there's no correlation or, or not significant correlation, I should say, between SAT scores and success in college and GRE scores and success in, in a master's degree program? It actually, it actually depends on the actual student drive and, and, you know, meeting the student where they're at. That's what drives their success in their academics, not this test that they, they took two or four years prior.
There's a lot of academic studies out there in the world, you know. I mean, I haven't done an exhaustive search, but I'm sure there's plenty of tests or academic studies that show that testing is an accurate way to measure students proficiency.
There are lots of professionals, even just in this community, who disagree with you, who actually do look at those studies and, and analyze those studies. We could invite, we could invite the, more Chico State professors to come talk to us about those. I know plenty of, of, of Education Department people who can talk, talk to us about how standardized tests, especially as far as entrance requirements go, maybe as checkpoints, as we use them for gauging student growth, individual student growth. That's a whole different thing, but when you're talking about a standardized test that is a straight line across the entire population and expecting students from various backgrounds and experiences and education opportunities to meet that same line, you're not, you're not measuring that student's growth. You're measuring that student against some standard that was arbitrarily established by somebody years ago that isn't actually scientifically based anymore. It's outdated. It's an outdated system.
On this point of the SATs and the SATs, I am thoroughly, thoroughly unimpressed with the people that you're talking about, who have concluded that it's good for our society or good for our academic system to get rid of the standardized test.
You've already clarified that you're not impressed with the educated people. I understand that. So back to my original question about how this translates different in the classroom, we're talking about providing students what they need where they're at so that they can grow. Student growth and grades can actually be a useful tool to empower students to continue to grow. Grades, as they are in those terms that you seem to be reflecting on, tend to be oppressive. And students who are struggling and see that F and they think, you know, it doesn't matter how hard I try at this point, I'm not going to be able to even bring it up to a D. Like, that's what we're talking about here. That's what equity is, is, is bringing the students up to, to a point that they can reach as far as growth goes. So my philosophy for grading, just so that we can, you know, be on equal terms as far as our understanding of where each other stance goes, my philosophy on grading, as an educator of 12 years, is that a grade should reflect a student's growth.
Well, I mean, clearly, we have just very, very different opinions, because I think that Fs are really, really important. And if people fail classes, for whatever reason, don't do the work, I think that's really, really bad. If instead of getting an F, if instead we give them a D or a C-, then we, we haven't done our job.
But an F doesn't mean they didn't do the work. If a student gets a 58%, did they do nothing? Did they learn nothing? But an F, but an F, it sounds like to you, an F means that they learned nothing, or they, they, they did not learn enough to have mastered any skills. But in truth, a student could master the skills, not have the time to do the homework, or not have the, the ability to perform in a certain way, but have actually learned quite a bit. I've had plenty of F and D students who actually were very intelligent and had a lot of, of knowledge. They grew, but their, their work output didn't necessarily reflect that in their grades. That's why I'm talking about grades being a poor place to, to place emphasis on.
That student clearly needs to adapt their, you know, what you say is total knowledge and proficiency to, toward test-taking and the skills that enable them to reflect that in a grade, because that's life.
That student is going to get, that student is going to get a high, a high score on their SATs probably and may or may not be successful in college. Some of that, some of those students who fall in that category, they don't, they don't do any of their work and then they are amazing in college, or they become great, great in the trades. They still end up being successful, even though they got that F. But we're, we're missing the point here. The point is, is that we are enabling a system that allows teachers and staff members to meet the students where they're at and to, and to provide an opportunity for growth and to allow for their grades to show their growth, rather than a specific standard that could be subjective.
Yeah, I think maybe I just like the idea of measuring students through testing, and you don't, and you don't, right?
It's comfortable to you, because it's what you understand. I'm telling you, as an educator, testing students has value as far as measuring growth goes, but when it comes to providing grades, that is something that can, can come with some bias, and it can actually really hurt, hurt students.
You know, employers, they like to see metrics that they can understand.
Yeah.
You know, so I have heard in this capacity as a school board member from employers, who say they want kids to learn the skills. Testing is, I think, one of the most important ways to measure that. And my point about the danger in learning institutions handing out easy As or easy Ds, for that matter, is a threat to our integrity.
I'm also.
Of a institute, you know, you're interrupting me.
Sorry.
Uh, as an institution of, of, of learning and preparing kids for employment and life.
I'm also really perplexed by this idea of, of handing out As or handing out Ds. You know, if a student is, is performing, so let me give an example. Would you agree with a teacher allowing a student to retake a test as many times as they needed to?
I haven't spent enough time, you know, meditating on that to, to, to give you an answer right now.
So if they see the test multiple times, eventually they're gonna, they're gonna end up doing better and better and better, right? So would that be grade inflation to you? Is that something that's not acceptable? Does that show growth or learning?
I know it's not always the case that, that people do better on a test the second time around, because I've experienced this firsthand.
But that's what we're, that's the kind of approach that we're talking about here with this LCAP, is, is meeting students where they're at, saying, "Let's, let's allow for students to redo their homework and turn it back in as a learning process. All the tests that we give, let's allow those to be a learning process. Every test is not just a finality. It's, it's a process to continue to learn and to continue to demonstrate what you know." And, but, but people would argue that that would lead to grade inflation.
Yeah, to me, I was just thinking the same exact thing, as you said that. That sounds like a nice, warm, moist environment where grade inflation could foster and grow and become a huge, huge problem.
But that student who's redone all that work and who has put in the effort, does that mean that they, that they didn't have the growth, that they didn't actually learn? Does that mean that they should still have the D instead of the A that they, you know, redid their work on and re-learned it and, and depth, you know, increased their depth of knowledge?
What if the teacher just didn't want to deal with, you know, the headache of, of, you know, the, the powers that be, the administration or their peers or whoever, you know, looking over their shoulder and breathing down their neck over the fact that they were giving a child an F or a D?
There, there are, there, that does happen.
So, so I don't want that to happen, and.
But, but that goes back to philosophy. So are we just there to give out grades? And to say, "Learn this, this way?"
No, no, and that's why.
"Learn this and this way, please don't dissuade me."
And no, and that's why I'm voting against the LCAP. We're not just there to give out grades, and that's why I'm, I'm against the LCAP today.
Yep.
Dr. Kaiser?
Uh, Tim, we don't use grades as our measurements for our.
We do not.
Thank you.
As our measurements for what?
In our LCAP metrics, we don't use grades to indicate student achievement. We mentioned it in this LCAP, because through COVID, that was a, a huge concern for us, you know, students missing credits essentially, and because of the learning loss that it indicates. So that's why it was reported, but it is not an official LCAP metric.
I'm going to step in. My turn. I've been embedded in Chico Unified since 1973. And I've, I've, I've seen a lot, as Dr. Kaiser has seen a lot, at the university level. We're, you know, we, we've been there for a few years. And I, I take a great issue, Mr. Tennis, with implying that there are teachers that are, for some nefarious reason, looking at how they grade or what grade they give a student as almost a political statement, from my interpretation of what you said. That's my interpretation. I disagree. When you mention that there was too much mention of racial equity in this LCAP, I don't see any. There, there, nothing that we, that we are doing is based or directed at a student group because of race. It's because of where they are in their educational growth process. Doesn't matter whether you're black, brown, green, purple. Where you are and what your need is, is what we're going to send to you in the way of help. The, as Mr. Karas mentioned, what we measure in the LCAP is the student's measurement against their, their own growth toward grade level and the competency level that we try to bring everybody up to so that they can be successful as they walk out of high school. I mean, that walking out of high school is just the first step. There's a lot waiting for a lot of kids out the door of high school. And there are a lot of kids, when I was an instructional assistant, which we've hired a lot of people to do, to work with students that were struggling, there were so many kids trying to be square pegs placed in round holes, and it didn't work, because we are all very different in how we learn, how we test, how we, how we let people know what we know. Our special ed students with IEPs, especially with our, our, our high achieving autistic children, you won't get very many of them that can pass a test. But if you sit down and evaluate what they know in a way that they can trans, you know, can, can, they're brilliant. They're absolutely brilliant. And if we're not recognizing that, as school people, as parents, as employers, if you look at what colleges are doing now for special education kids, because they know their, their brilliance is. because they know their, their brilliance is, is not accessible by our, our standard assessments that we've always used, this school district wants everyone to exceed, or to succeed to the point they're capable of. And in order to have that happen, we have to, we have to treat kids differently because how they learn, you know, some kids, you know what I mean? There, there's just so many different things that we need to take into account. And we have been. That's why we are a successful school district. The problem is, we haven't had all of the resources and the tools available to make it better. Because of COVID, and the resources that we've been sent, attaching that to our LCAP and to the other plans that we've budgeted for, we're going to be able to add resources that we, at least I wished all along, we could do, and we couldn't afford, because California doesn't fund education. So I'm going to very happily vote yes on this LCAP. And I look forward to three years down the line when we've been able to assess periodically, at least once a quarter with some of the stuff. And for some teachers, they're assessing every single day. Did what I taught today work? Did what I taught today reach 20% of the kids, or 70% of the kids? What do I need to reteach? Every single day, there's an assessment of what did I do that was successful? And what did I do that wasn't? Teachers share best practices. Our, our, our faculty puts their heads together on a regular basis in the structure that we've provided with our, our, our district leadership councils and school site groups where we look at what's working, what isn't working? What isn't working, how can we fix it? I'm proud, as a trustee, to vote yes on what I think is an amazing job that we've done under the circumstances. And I look forward to being able to monitor the, the areas that are working and look at what our teams are gonna do to quickly fix the areas that we see aren't working. Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Dolby?
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of address a small elephant in the room, too. And, and this is based off of Mr. Tennis's comments about the public comments on the LCAP having been so negative in the last, in the last two weeks that it's been posted. And, you know, that the elephant in the room is a, a political movement to demonize the concept of equity, and, and what equity stands for. And this politicization of the word equity, and equating that to critical race theory, which is not a conversation we're having right now.
Yep.
And to say that, that CHICO Unified is somehow going down the critical race theory road, and we're doing it without, you know, transparency, and we're gonna teach the kids about racism, that is not what this LCAP is about. This LCAP is about meeting kids where they're at, and making sure that they're all provided with, with the tools that they, they need in, as individuals, to, to grow, to reach their growth goals. And that we will use our resources and our measurements to, to assess that, that success over the next few years with this, the guide of this LCAP. And so I think that the public comments that we've received, that I don't know if we've received a negative comment that didn't mention critical race theory. To me, that demonstrates a mis-, a misunderstanding, possibly a, a malicious intent, intent, uh, intended, um, confusion of the concept to, to make this a political issue, when we're really just talking about serving our, each student with the, with what they need. That's, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, the email showed back up. She missed the phone call, and she's saying she can respond to a phone call if we try again.
Dr. Kaiser, this is the same person we attempted four times last meeting to reach?
I don't, I don't know.
Yes, it is. We were able to verify that. We made one attempt at the proper time, tonight, and that's, we're going to end it there. Do I have a motion on this item? Oh, I'm sorry, we did, yes. That's how come we had discussion. Okay, then I'm going to call for a vote, and anticipating not a unanimous vote, as you've had members indicate, I'll call for individual members, Member Dolby?
I'm happy to vote yes, because we have been waiting a long time for those resources to put them towards this effort.
Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, just like Eisenhower.
Mr. Tennis?
Nay.
Robinson, aye. It passes three to one. Thank you, members. Okay, Mr. Baltima, we are at the original budget point?
Uh, yes. We presented to you the original budget at the last meeting. And since then, we do have actions taken at the legislative level and at the governor's level, just to inform the board so that you understand the impact. On June 26th, or actually, the evening of June 25th, the legislature adopted or passed their budget. That did include the 5.07% cost of living adjustment. It also paid off all deferrals, cash deferrals, which we thought was a good move. It did increase special education, specifically in the area of children ages three to five, so it added additional dollars within the formula, the AB 602 formula, for students that age. Some additional dollars related to career technical incentive grant.
Mr. Baltima, what was the increase in that age? I, I know what they've been different. Could, could you start back at the beginning?
Sure.
Not at the beginning, beginning, but that one issue of the differences at the different grade levels.
So we don't have the detail of how it's specifically per student going to impact the AB 602 funding formula.
Okay.
The state has allocated $260 million for that purpose. So it still needs to go through the allocation to determine the actual amount that it will impact the AB 602. But it is additional dollars that we will benefit from.
Thank you.
We are, I don't have a slide. This is just an update.
Dr. Kaiser?
I just saw, and I'm not sure, but I thought that the governor was saying that they would fund TK for all four-year-olds.
Correct. So that is actually one of the additional items as well. It adopts universal transitional kindergarten phasing in the expanded age eligibility for full implementation in the year 25, 26.
Oh, 25, 26, okay.
25, 26. So it will be phased in similar to when TK was originally adopted, and they moved those dates back in the calendar year.
Yeah.
And then we're also seeing additional one-time money related to the A through G completion grant. We don't have a lot of detail. So as you can see, these are just a few of the, the key items. We're waiting for a lot of the detail. Since then, the governor has taken action to sign this initial. It's, it's partial, so there's lots of trailer bills that are also gonna be coming. But one of the key provisions of what was ultimately signed is that unemployment insurance percentage rate that we have represented in our multi-year projection. It was a 1.23% increase, almost a million-dollar expenditure in the current, the next year, in the 21, 22 year. They've taken action to reduce that back to the historical rate of .05.
Okay.
So our budget will improve, based on what we showed you at the previous meeting, by another million dollars. So we were projecting a positive change in our unrestricted fund balance of 3.8 million. This will add another million dollars to that, so we'll be at a positive 4.8.
You scared me for a second. I thought we were going the opposite direction there. I thought you said it's increasing another 1%, or over 1%, and I almost choked on my snack here.
No, it actually improves our budget. Now, in the out-years, we had already reduced that down to .20%. So there is a little bit of additional savings we'll experience in those out-years as well, but not to the same extent we will experience in 21, 22. So there's still information that needs to come out. There are still trailer bills that we're expecting. And for the board and the community, we will be bringing a 45-day budget update that will encapsulate everything that's included this after July 1st.
Okay, Board, do you have any other technical questions of Mr. Baltima? Kevin, I have a question. On the trailer bills, is, there is a cutoff on how long they have to get those things through before they become a two-year bill, right?
I'm not sure of that. I would have to look into that timeline. I do know there are timelines. I just, I'm not exactly sure of the specific dates.
I, I'd kind of like to know, before you do your, the 45-day update, to know, just a couple of reasons, but that's information I'd like to have. Any other quest, technical questions, members? Do we have any request for public comment, Ms. Daly?
We do not.
Okay, do we have any motions from the board relative to this item?
I move this budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Tennis, a second by Dr. Kaiser. All those, any further discussion, members? All those in favor? Aye.
We have to do a voice vote again.
I'm sorry, what?
We have to do another single voice vote again, because we-
Oh, right, it was, last one was not unanimous. Thank you. Yes.
Dolby, aye.
Aye. Kaiser, aye.
Tennis, aye.
Robinson, aye. Four to one approval. And, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Lando is still absent. Okay. Okay. Next item is also, Mr. Baltima, we're going to review the Educational Protection Act, the EPA, that we first heard of last week.
And yes, we also did a public hearing at the last meeting regarding these dollars. As a reminder to the board and the public, these are not new dollars. It is really a mechanism to report back how it, money was spent related to the bonds that were passed on propositions 58 and 59. We use all of those dollars, 22 million in excess, for teacher salaries exclusively. So with that, we ask for board approval.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of Mr. Baltima? Do we have any public comment requested?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do we have a motion associated with this agenda item?
I move to approve.
I second.
I have a motion by Ms. Dolby, a second by Dr. Kaiser, to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approved, four to one, with Mr. Lando still absent. Okay, Mr. Baltima, we're bringing now the reserves disclosure on the original budget.
Yes, we had a public hearing on this item as well at our last meeting for the board and for the public. We are projecting a unrestricted fund balance of $32,027,551 at the end of the fiscal year. We also show that we're able to meet all of our reserve requirements, the 3% requirement from the state, the board's 2% requirement, and the 18, 19 one-time dollars that were set aside as board reserves as well, which leaves us a balance of $19,516,862 that we are showing a justification related to cash flow, enrollment volatility, negotiations, and fiscal solvency. So we present this for the public, for the board, and we ask for approval.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment requested?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. And Board, do we have a motion relative to this item?
I move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Dolby moves to approve the reserves disclosure. Mr. Tennis seconded. Any further discussion, Board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Were, were we four ayes? Thank you. Okay, four to one with Mr. Lando, still absent. Okay, uh, oh, I got to ride in one of these a couple of years ago. This was fun. Mr. Baltima, the Butte County Air Quality Management District and the Carl Moyer Program funding bus replacement, what's the criteria?
Yes, we have an opportunity to receive grant dollars to purchase an electric bus in the amount of $402,209. The grant would pay $400,000 of that amount, so the district would have to pay 200 and, or $2,209 towards that purchase. I will note that electric buses, we have one currently that we have in our yard, one that is ready to be delivered, and then this would be our third. The mileage in between charges, we are not realizing as many as that we had hoped. So we're not able to use our large type-one bus for as many trips as we originally had planned. However, this would be a type-two bus that are transporting throughout the day. The ability to use them for smaller routes would exist. We still think the technology continues to get better, so it's really the battery technology that would drive us to replacing more and more of our buses that are diesel over into electric. So we would recommend that we get approval from the board to apply for the grant and purchase a type-two electric bus.
Hey, do we have any public comment requests?
We do not.
Thank you. Board, do we have a motion relative to this item?
I move to take their $400,000 and get us another electric bus.
I second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to, yes, take their money and run. Drive, yes. Ms. Dolby?
So just slightly off-topic discussion about this grant funding. It comes from, in part from Butte County Air Quality Management District. And I just wanted to put out there, it should be an announcement, but Butte Environmental Council got approved for a grant, also a small grant, to provide workshops to classrooms about air quality. And so we will be pushing for that next school year along with the Resource and Recycling Education Program. So just FYI, that there's more workshops coming all your way, teachers.
Great, thank you.
And we can teach about our new electric buses.
Yeah. When we took delivery of the first one, a number of us got to ride it. And they're, they're quite impressive. We did have to add sound to them, so people knew that there was a bus coming, because they're so quiet. Yeah, that was one of the-
That's why my Prius beep beeps when I back up.
Yeah, good thing.
Just out of curiosity, what does a non-electric bus cost?
Oh, for a type-two electric bus, we're probably in the $220,000 range for a diesel.
Okay, do we have any request for public comment?
We do not.
We are ready for a vote. We already did those steps? Well, thank you. Board members, all those in favor of taking their money and driving?
Aye.
Thank you. Four to one with Mr. Lando, still absent. Okay. District-wide school photography, oh, one of the first questions the kids always ask is, when are school pictures, depending on how old the child is? Oh, uh, Mr. Baltima?
Sure. Just a quick background. A number of years ago, we consolidated the photography contract district-wide, really to provide the best and most, best pricing and consistent offerings, so that parents knew who they were dealing with, and the school sites were treated fairly and the same. so that parents knew who they were dealing with and the school sites were treated fairly and the same. So at that time, we used Lifetouch. We exited that contract going into next year based on some challenges with performance over the last year. But we opened up that RFP and we received one proposal. Also, so the Board and the public is clear, we do not pay any fee for this contract. It allows them to come in and market their pictures to our schools. So I would like to give a lot of credit to Rosio French. She really took on this RFP, drafting that, working with our office managers, because often it's the office managers who are working with the photography company for scheduling and follow-ups and that type of thing. And so we did have a number of office managers looking at the RFP, and we did review it with a couple of members that were noted. And ultimately, they recommended that we move to this new company. So we are recommending that we accept this proposal. And with, I should note the name. Thank you, with Dorian Studios.
Yes. Do we have any requests for public comment? Okay, I, just an aside, this contract is with a company that is in Sacramento, but they're, they have people as liaisons that are already here in Chico and are familiar with our, our schools and our process. Is there a motion associated with this item?
Since I have really cute kids, I move.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Dr. Kaiser, a second from Ms. Dolby.
Actually, I have a question I should have maybe asked during presentation. Is there any, because it sounds like there's no upfront cost of the district, right, for, for school photos? But is, I, and I don't recall this as a teacher, it's something I wasn't really in tuned to, but is there a, a system in place to provide discounted photos for students who may not have the means to obtain their, their photos or a way for the district to support a program like that? Or is there anything like that in place at this time?
I don't believe we have anything like that. It's strictly voluntary, so we have not used any public funds for that purpose.
The, if there's a group photo or a yearbook picture produced from the photo, whether it's purchased by the parents or not, the student is included in that, in that format?
I understand. There's several norms in schools that still create inequities that I'm always a little bit mindful of, so that's one of them.
Yep. I understand. No, I, I absolutely agree that even at the lowest cost, it's still, I think $20 is the basic one or two-picture price. And for some families, that's just not something they can do.
Yeah.
Especially with multiple kids. Maybe that would be a, a good thing for our school sites to discuss. Public comment? Thank you. Is there a motion associated with this item? We already did because you have cute kids. Okay, all those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Four to one, yes, with Mr. Lando, still absent. That's, that's not a put-down of Mr. Lando. We're all aware that his need to be gone tonight was significant.
I did actually have a point of order in that how that's being recorded because his absence doesn't count as a no vote. It would just be that it's a four to zero, four to nothing, and there's only four members here.
There's, it's, it's, it's reported as however many yes and no votes there are of those of us present.
Right.
The absent vote is at the bottom of the list and it will just say, "Lando absent."
I think I'm just hearing you say four to one, and I'm thinking it sounds like four yeses and one no. I just wanted to clarify that.
It's recorded as an absence and not part of the accounting. Okay. Oh, we're, I've already flipped the page. I'm sorry. Mr. Baltima, again, you're on regarding the loca, yeah, Mr. Baltima's agenda.
I feel very popular.
For our meetings.
Yes, so, and in preparation for school starting, this facility will be in use for performances and really will not be available for Board meetings. It served us well during the COVID-19 pandemic because we have some very nice technology here and staff was able to set up, but we were also able to leave the setup in place. So as we go forward, we provided four options for the Board to consider. We added some pros. We didn't give you any necessarily the cons because we just wanted to point out some of the positives related to our schools. We noted Marigold Multipurpose Room. It's one of our schools that have been modernized and in new construction. But it is good size. The stage is lower at that school site, so the Board may feel closer to the public. I know that's been one of the concerns at Marsh that you felt maybe higher and away from the public. The infrastructure is all in place to have meetings there. There's a proximity to this CFA, so from a technology standpoint, staff could easily move between this site and Marigold. Certainly complies with the American Disabilities Act with new construction. And there is a room right off of the Marigold area for closed session before or after a meeting. We also note Neil Dow, really almost all the same pluses. The only thing is it doesn't have the attached room for closed session at Neil Dow. So we would have to move across the playground to do closed session before or after. We could go back to Marsh. You experienced that, but we do note that often the Board is felt maybe a little more disconnected from the public. And, and it is, since it's, the location isn't, doesn't have as good a parking for the public as well. You have to kind of walk into the campus to access it. So it certainly serves its purpose well. It's large enough, it's well-lit, and it has all the technology that we need in that space as well. And we note the district large conference room. We use it for many of our Board meetings that are workshops, but it's small and would be limited for the public. So we kind of note those are four that, from a facility use standpoint, that we could enter into fairly easily. But we wanted the input from the Board on where you might want to start meeting as early as next month.
Thank you. Dr. Kaiser?
I'm going to strongly urge Marigold. I think that its accessibility is quite significant. And since most of our current facilities improvement under our approved plan are focused on elementaries, it's a really important thing for people to see elementary schools who have taken on a new, a new character. So I, I am very happy to suggest Marigold.
Ms. Dolby?
Is it my understanding correct that there used to be a practice of rotating to different sites for different, for each meeting? I'm sure that there's cons to that, but I also know that there are some pros to that in, in that we would be visiting multiple sites throughout the city?
Yes, we did try for two years the rotation of sites. And there were issues just with consistency in the public knowing where to go for the meetings.
That's the first thing that I thought of.
Yeah, and the setup. And then we did try, and, you know, and this is something that is still a possibility. We had our regular meetings at a consistent location. And then depending on the topic that we were discussing in our workshop, we could go to different sites. So if we were talking about facilities, we could go to a site to see some of the facility upgrades. And we can still do that as well.
I like that idea.
Mr. Tennis, did you have?
Actually, I was really eager to hear from Madam Kaiser and you, Madam President, because you've actually been to meetings and participated in meetings at these locations. So, so, yeah, no strong, strong opinions here with me. I mean, I would just like it to be a nice facility that's open to the public. So I like this facility a lot. So get me as close to this experience. That's what I want.
I'll, I'll weigh in. We, when we got, when we made the decision to leave the city council chambers, it was difficult to have the, the feeling of public interaction that we had at the city council chambers. But when we settled at Marsh, the first thing that was most noticeable was not feeling close to the people that had come to the meeting. That was why I, I would not vote to go back to Marsh. I like the idea of going to Marigold. I think the lighting in that parking area and stuff is excellent. And I agree that highlighting the upgrades at an elementary school is, is wonderful. And I, I think that not moving from meeting to meeting is good because there's so much stuff that has to go with us in the way of media presentations and things that I'd like to stay as settled as, yes, as settled as possible so that we can, you know, we can continue to reach out to our public.
We don't want to mentally challenge our high-tech people either.
Caitlin?
I'll also add to your comments about Marsh, which I'm obviously biased towards because I love that school. But it is difficult to access the multipurpose room from a parking lot. I had to let, a lot of times, I was always in my classroom until like six to eight PM every day, so I always let people through my classroom. My, my classroom was kind of a gateway to campus from that parking lot. So I would agree that Marsh, for that reason, plus what you mentioned, is, is not the most ideal location either, although it is a gorgeous upgraded campus.
Yeah. Do I have a motion?
I move Marigold.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that. I just pulled up the picture of the, of the new facilities at Marigold. I haven't even seen it yet. It looks great.
Yeah, it is. Oh, we didn't, was there public comment? There was no public comment requested. Okay, any further discussion?
Would it be appropriate to maybe add a friendly amendment? And, or maybe we could just discuss as a different action item later on to consider rotating for our workshops, just to, so that we do have a presence on multiple campuses and, and give, kind of give the love to everybody, but have our, our general monthly meetings wherever we approve? Is that an amendment, or should I just add that sometime later?
One is on the regular meeting location and, and the other is, is for the workshop meetings and the, the down part of the workshop meetings because we, we did go through the rotation effort. And it, it really, the public didn't like it because they didn't know where it was going to be next.
Yeah, I think, I think my, my reasoning for maybe considering that is just that, you know, if we're talking about, I think Superintendent Daley mentioned, you know, if we're talking about facilities, if we want to upgrade a facility or we, we're not sure, but we actually have the meeting there, or we're talking about facilities and we're at a place that we know needs the most work, or, you know, that there's been the most public comment that it needs the most work kind of thing, and, you know, the public sees that we are, we are all there to put our eyes on it, not just in our own time, but just as that effort. I'm, I'm, that's only an example of why I, I have this desire to consider it, but I understand the challenges of the logistics of it as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to not allow the amendment to be attached to the motion so that we have two different issues, if that is okay? So I, do we have any, if I already asked for public comment, okay. And we have a motion and a second, and no further discussion. All those in favor of Marigold?
Aye.
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 Okay, we have selected Marigold. Ms. Dolby, if I might suggest that down the road, if, if you'd like to bring that suggestion back to the Board after we get settled with our workshop topics and things?
Yeah, we could even do it on a case-by-case basis and have it be an agenda item to, you know, decide later on too. So there's, there's different ways to go about doing that. I don't think tonight needs to be the decision maker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Tennis.
Point of inquiry, what? Are there no items from the floor in this meeting? Just curious.
No, it's, it's a workshop meeting. Items from the floor are regular Board meetings. Next is the, any Board member request to agendize an item at a future meeting? Yes, Mr. Tennis?
You know, I was going to bring something up, but I was informed by staff that it already exists. So I should have brought this up during announcements. But maybe we'll just pretend that we didn't have that conversation and I'll bring this up for a future discussion. You can correct me. So I thought it would be nice if, since we have so many more students who are going to be participating in Oak Bridge online in the future, if those students, both on the high school level and the junior high level, were able to participate in sports programs that are at the schools. I knew there had been discussion about, once upon a time, chargers were allowed to and then not allowed to. But for Oak Bridge, I thought they ought to be able, able to. And so I was going to bring that forward as something.
Mr. Shepherd?
Go ahead.
Yes, they are absolutely eligible to participate. And they can also participate in clubs if they wish to attend. They do band, choir, they do participate as a member of the, of their neighboring school. So they don't get to choose. It's based on their neighboring school unless they, unless they form ten. But yeah, they are, we welcome them to participate.
That's great. So please note news media, both print and digital or, or visual, that students who are participating online through Oak Bridge can participate in sports programs at their neighborhood school.
Okay. I believe we have reached the end of our agenda. We have no need for closed session. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Board.